Now we're live.
All new order. And then Saturday six. Monday, May sixth, twenty twenty four is a work session. Capital discussion of the twenty twenty five capital improvement plan. The song role. Mayor Beal, President. Councilor Ariel.
Present.
Councilor Flattable.
Present.
Councilor Ryan here. Councilor Alders.
Here.
Deputy clerk, Allison.
Here.
We also have Lori, you're present with us. And your city administrator just got the. Local state and city.
Same way.
Houseman Brian.
Motion to approve the agenda as drafted.
Second.
Motion of the second, on paper. I have both, both candidates.
Mary. You're present.
Right? If we, if there's anything you want to find out. Grab statement on the front page. Transfer Dayton, now one thing that we haven't really discussed. We should not figure somewhere in here is signs. We used to budget a certain amount for signs.
Okay.
For capital. And it was out today and I realized that somewhere a sign is pretty old.
Okay.
And I don't know what our, our replacement plan is, but remember in the past it was fairly expensive. I don't know if we have an inventory right now. Have a date on it. I do know a couple of years back in the budget discussions. We state had issued. New criteria. For reflectivity and size. And they're going to mandate everybody to do that. And there's going to be ten to thousands of dollars.
Yes.
And they backed off.
Yeah.
To a future date. I don't know if that's still coming or still looming, but. Some we should look into and consider as part of our capital plan.
Right, right. I think there's no.
Each part is a system though.
This is, this is on the transportation page.
Yeah.
It's, um. Oh, yeah. It's the. Well, second group. Be.
Signs and signals.
Signs and signals. Right efficient orderly system of street and traffic signs remote safe convenient problem for the city. So any. Any of the chevrons we have, any of our stop signs that were responsible for. And then the street signs. And that's going to be pretty crazy.
Years ago that day that.
Yeah, I'm surprised it's self awful.
I am too, I, because I remember budgeting for, for the city of Anoka back. Way back then, so. Um, yeah. I'm surprised.
Yeah, I think, I think just our, our streets and the other chevrons and stuff. And those, I'm not sure. Next one on parks. Program statement, program goal. Provide. The community parks open space recreation structures and facilities. Program goal provide facilities for safe stimulating and comprehensive leisure time activities. And noted for Malvin residents. So parks are pretty popular with non-residents, but I make sure that as we budget things, we're considering how now when uses the parks. And. Separate discussion we can have is we want to do something that. Has people that are using our parks aren't now the residents, maybe contribute something in the future, but that's not part of the capital plan. When something as you're talking about park improvements, they've got to make sure that we're focusing on now the residents. And the else, people want comment on parks. General public buildings. We'll get to this and get to the actual numbers. Public safety facilities. And we had our. Movement open house fire station last year.
Yeah.
And one of the comments that came up. As I was listening to a few firefighters. They're trying to figure out how to get more space, our station without having to build a whole brand new one.
Yeah.
And so I think we. We should probably. Have staff investigate. Putting a fifth bay on. Which would require moving the, the generator. And sirens, which are not unreasonable things and putting up a. A pole structure on the west end of that building.
Okay.
And we should. At least see what that might cost and where that fits into capital plan.
Mm hmm.
But when we get our new tanker truck. They ordered the firefighters saying they might want to keep the existing one as backup. And there's no bay for that.
Okay.
And I know Joe had said previously, he does not want to bring that over to the public building. But if we put a. A additional bay on the end there. Doesn't have to have full complements of the rest of the building. Just walk through that door, but we could store. Grass rig and boat, stuff like that often. Make our.
What do we store right now? Store my store?
Right now, that's where we put our winter equipment, so our snow plows and some of that stuff. So the off season goes in the cold storage here. But. They want to have the equipment there at the fire station, but. Right now they're, if you've seen how the double park thing is in there. Takes a little while to pull it out of the hatch and.
Right now the all we had is a cold storage building, so we can add, I'll add this, um. Potential pit or bay and. I'll have to talk with Scott to figure out what, um. The costs are going to be and all that kind of stuff, but.
Number of years ago, the fourth bay was just cold storage. I knocked out that wall and, and up there it is. I guess I think, you know, the, nobody's thought about adding on that bay down there just because the sirens there. You know. And all that, uh.
Is this an urgent? Is it a twenty seven, a twenty nine? You know, and, and.
I would say. Sooner rather than later, because we'll need a space to put. Our truck if we have to do that, actually get that new.
Rapid tires.
Any thought somewhere in the. I know the, the house has got some, but I got something with the sirens. Without a good location still in that area, I don't know.
I would, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, septic runs on a, a grassy area behind the south wind station. But I would look at. Potentially somewhere along that line behind the station. And the generator. I don't know if that can be. In, indoor. And they talked about, right now they have their compressor indoors and use it outdoors. So if the generator, when it does run. The door would be open. I don't know what the rules are for generator like that. But I know we were looking at that before, moving a generator is. Is. Not as expensive as building the building.
What was that?
Say move, not as expensive as building a new building.
Right, moving the generator.
Basically, it's the cable. But it's at least worth investigating in the same way.
Yeah, we did an addition on the generator. Was, became inside. Piece of a building and we had to build a separate structure. To house just the generator.
Yeah, that's what we have right now for the compressor there. We built a room in the corner and vented it outside, so the compressor kicks in. It's, it's in the building, but it's.
It's a box in. Yeah, ours is boxed as well, so we don't.
And that was one of the boxes. The firefighters were talking about it, maybe to box it and vent it, like they would do a compressor. Putting it after a moment.
Do you know how much that was? Fifty thousand, well.
Ours is quite a bit bigger.
Is it?
Yeah. Same.
I don't know. I won't figure it out. Right, and just so you know, um. We're planning on issuing bonds next year in twenty twenty five, so it could be a good year. To, you know, do something like that because you could tack on some extra bond issuance for those that, or, or extra costs.
Two thousand twenty five, they're issuing bonds?
Yep, twenty twenty five, we have issuing bonds for our street projects. Yes, you are.
Mr. Mayor.
Potentially. Otherwise you have zero money in your, your capital this year.
Would you mind reading it up?
Um, my question would be is what is our specific direction to staff? Are they, are they to come back with blueprints? Just thoughts? Estimated pricing, what? Give them some time, others.
Estimated pricing. And the logistics of. And A and B, put in the. All. And. Rob, children put in the. That's all the top. The county is also looking at. Siren project right now.
Might have to bring it next, yeah, if that's part of it.
And so there's an upgrade to, what they're trying to do is, is zone the sirens, so. Just because part of Anoka County. Currently, a part of Anoka County has emergency. All sirens go.
Mm hmm.
But it could be already well east of us. So they're trying to re, reconfigure the sirens and replace some of these sirens. So they're upgradable to the immediate coding. So that you only give a siren that affects your area. And so this might be a good time to, the emergency management. Can reschedule to later this month, so it's going to be something great for that. Could be something we could tidy up.
I'm sorry, you sort of asked me to do the estimation and what?
The logistics of doing. You know, can, can, can we have the generator indoors if we box it off and vent it outside? If we remove the bowl of the sirens. And reposition it somewhere else. Where would it be some, some quality? Then we'll be checking with the county on their siren front. Have you got some information on that? For this, this one bill, thousand dollars to upgrade it.
Right.
For town.
That's really done on the budget.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Okay. So the equipment base, anybody got anything? No, and we'll go into the actual numbers. The first one is park improvements for twenty twenty five. We've got thirty thousand dollars in there. For potential improvements in the Royal Park. The next part.
Really, I mean, I'm, I'm just, we really hadn't focused on anything at our, our meeting. We just tend to say, you know, maybe there should be some kind of park improvements, but at this point, maybe. We have something more at our site, we can, we can put that in here.
How about grills?
What was we kind of? What kind of something, Mr. Mayor? Yes.
What council member, Flattable, talking about this, we have. Residents come in and ask us about. Some grills in some certain areas, so we did some investigating and realized that we were down quite a bit of grills in our parks. And the grills that are there are very poor shooting, so as of this morning, I received an estimate. And we'll be putting together, ring to all you when I get to the numbers, I'll find ways for what's like, um, five. Charcoal grills. And two additional different types of covers that go on over here and one that's not. Um, but the only, the just be able to. Grill, but, uh, when we did our inventory, it was very evident to us that our grills need some love, so we are getting together. Actually, very often. Excuse me, actually very often. Yeah, you're in touch, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a plan, we're working a plan and I'll make sure we get it during the end of the finals. Yes, that's a good use of our.
So on that, so our grills. Do we also have containers next to them for? The, the burnt up charcoal? Should we consider something like that?
We used to. Been a long time since we. Those containers.
And what I'm asking, if we, if, so if we do not have them, is that something we should look at entertaining? So that when the next, but people hopefully will clear out, clean it out into the metal bin. Not flat, say, metal bin. Or at least the next person up, if they leave them in the grill to, to disintegrate, the next person up doesn't have a dirty grill. And can put what, what is left in to the containers. And what's nice with that, it could go then for starters and stuff like that. So I mean, there's a potential there, the board. Usage rather than just throwing, still. I'm just thinking of like recycle.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable to take a look at that. As always, even with the grills themselves, I'm already.
Yeah.
For them staying secure and all that, but I think it, instead of leaving them as for somebody else to, or wherever they actually put it, right? Does it end up in the grass like that? Or does it end up, I, I think providing them a place to be able to, to get rid of it in a. Reasonable fashion is something that maybe we should, so I, I can certainly add that to the good.
I would think that the businesses that sell these products have. Hopefully evolved in what they offer, how, in, in how it can be secured versus say twenty years ago.
Sure.
You could just leave it next to them in the side.
I would agree, and if they don't come up with something, I'm sure we can. We'll get it secured, isn't that pretty lucky? So can be effective. Longest. Mr. Mayor?
You're doing that this year.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a process.
I was.
Yes, sir. Um, the other, the other thing, um. That the thirty thousand dollars, and I'm sure you, you all recall the conversations we've had around that is, is also upgrading. The memorial right outside here, that's kind of what we started out talking about maybe a year ago, maybe even better. Uh, about maybe getting some of the. Trees, bushes, whatever you guys want to call those out there, maybe they started at bushes, they end up in trees now, is to get some of that cleaned up. Uh, and to take a look at, is there anything else from a memorial standpoint would we like to put in there? And what can we do to be able to kind of? Spruce that up and be happy with. With maybe some improvements that maybe we can add to it. So that's kind of what some of that money would also slot in function. Was that about the thirty or was there talk about, can I know, two, you would, then retire the basketball court? Is that on it? We did in the thirty, was just sprucing out? Up here or? So the thirty was, so my reflection when we retired, we were like, what can we do at twin lake, we're not going to be able to put. A roof on the pavilion out there or the concessions area and all that kind of stuff. Um, but we were talking about this, could we paint the, can we paint the, you know, the, uh. Concession stand at twin lakes, can we do some of those things? Um. We talked about this. I don't recall, I think when we looked at this, I thought we had twenty thousand dollars slotted separately for the basketball court, not with this thirty thousand. I'm almost positive on that segment. We had a different dollar.
Yeah.
Or, I think it's in here, yeah. But that's an extension of the long way, no, I don't do it.
Mr. Mayor, it was a, so I had, um. Pickleball courts in twenty twenty four. I had fifty thousand for some nights and I had thirty thousand for the million improvements in twenty twenty four. And that thirty thousand really, for twenty twenty five has not been designated as of yet, it's just park improvements. So. This is the time if you want to order in the budget process, but this is really the time, you can see I kind of spotted in. Thirty thousand a year, because I don't know. There's not any other plans, so, um. I'm just trying to, to. Do some improvements there. We do have, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there. At the beginning of. Twenty four, to spend your hundred thousand that become.
Sure.
So where's the basketball court in there?
They're not, there's nothing identified now, so you wanted to do that for thirty thousand. If, you know, we can do that. For ten more.
Yeah, that's a pickleball.
Yeah.
Yeah, while it was doing something with that area.
Yeah. Yeah, basketball, the thought was. The replacing the basketball, unless we did a demo with the zipper last year. And took our ba, basketball court, and take out the rest of the basketball court. And replace it. And the idea was to make it big enough to have pickleball courts on the basketball court. To get striped for pickleball. And utilize that for pickleball and see how hard we'll do this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ray.
Um, we did not, uh, end the first demo, so we don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, so there was a, a demo last fall. Machine called the asphalt zipper. And it tears up asphalt and ground it back in, it's a small version of what they do with it. They, uh, mill an overlay. And, uh, we, we had a demo here because we could use it on parking lots and some of the city properties. Um, but also. They demoed it on gravel roads, so you can take the gravel roads and grind them down six inches. And mix the fines and the gravel back in. So the idea was to. Be able to mix, uh. Dust control and treatments into the gravel. And remix the gravel instead of just only more gravel on top. So that was, one of the demos they did was to show us in blacktop, they had. Half the basketball court, maybe left with the machine playing that the other half time, so. So right now, half the basketball court has nothing, the other one has the original, oh, the two inch on. So what Scott was looking into was what are the dimensions of pickleball without going into a full, full blown. Expensive pickleball. Court. Just enlarge the basketball court slightly to include two pickleball. Court layouts, so we just have to stripe it. They got the nets available.
How much more does that cost than just doing the basketball court?
We're adding about ten feet to the existing size of the basketball court and the, uh, estimate that I got to go from current size to the pickleball court size of forty eight hundred dollars. Then includes the groundwork laying and I'll get the foundation and then we have two of us.
Does that, Mr. Mayor?
You can write it.
Does that include, um. Scott, any of the additional things that need to be done for the football cart, like to keep the ball in or modeling the line or any of that?
Sir.
Um, is that?
Uh, no, it does not. This is just the asphalt slab. This is no fencing, no staking, no nets, nothing that has any, it just. Enlarges the, the size of the, the asphalt there to take on a pickleball court. We got the dimensions from it. If the city just so chooses to do that, that's all it is, is just the asphalt at this point.
And then basically, that all. Can survive that, go down to Anoka. Right off hook. Seven. They've got a park there, it's a hockey rink and. Clear time and, and, uh. So there's no boards, no fence, just.
And has council decided we truly want to buy the pickleball, but incur costs to determine what it's going to cost us and?
That's part of the, Scott was getting numbers to say. If we do the basketball court, just for basketball, here's the numbers, if it's slightly enlarged, that you could lay out a pickleball markings on it. Uh, this would be the additional, it's first time I've heard of the addition. That's what the council has not decided that yet. I do know, um, talking with some Ramsey residents. Um, all of their courts are completely booked, you're going to have to register with the city and. And make reservations and so. It's one of those things that. I would speculate based on what's going on all these years around this, that it'd be used a lot more than basketball. I've seen basketball in the last year, maybe one versus.
I would again, I was, I, I, I don't think we need to go to pickleball, I, I don't, um. And if we're doing it for the Ramsey residents, I definitely don't want to do it.
No, we got, our residents are having to try and play in Ramsey, now Ramsey's taking it out, it's about, they're getting pickleball. What's happening is because Ramsey's taking it down, there's our residents. Aren't maybe able to play the ball, so they have Ramsey and the one in Old Grove by the fire station to go to.
But they have more than one court, right?
Oh, yes, just the one.
But.
Ramsey's had quite a few.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
They've played both of them. So will that take away from basketball for people being able to get on bas, and play basketball? That's the other thing.
Sure. So as we were taking a look at this and trying to plan it out, we would still be able, by the way, you brought up a good point, these are. These would be two courts, the size that we're looking at, they're going to be two courts side by side. And the way, in talking with the contractor, we look like we would have the ability to still be able to have the. Basketball court on one end of them and still be able to do the, uh. The pickleball court. Worst case scenario, we have pickleball going and then if somebody wasn't using it, they would, but it, it, it's going to be, it's going to be tricky with. If you were going to play basketball in two pickleball courts at a time, it could be a little tricky with.
And if you had people playing. And they're not conducive to the pickleball courts that I play at, for instance. Then you're going to have residents that are asking for more of those, which then we're looking at going from forty eight hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. Approximately for a pickleball court.
Uh, in, in all honesty, I don't know what price of pickleball courts were, I haven't gone that far down, I've just been looking at the asphalt. You may be right, I, I don't know what it costs to put it for it. If you're going to paint it, put lines in, put nets in, all that kind of stuff, if you decide you want to put fencing so the ball doesn't go. I, I don't know to what extent we'd want to do it, and quite honestly, I started like. Able to speak to a little cost to finalize it, so.
No, fine.
Like, well, the.
But again, we haven't committed to. Expanding that, we haven't seen how. The, the idea was. We're relaying a, the asphalt to the basketball. How much more would it make it, make it? How much more would it cost to make it conducive to? Pickleball, for instance. And, uh. It's there, if nobody uses it, nobody uses it, and we certainly wouldn't investigate any further, it's pickleball courts. They're lined up, and we don't have any competition for basketball, and then there's one for pickleball. And then it can come back to the council saying what are you going to do going forward and where will we put that? That's right. There's no commitment beyond that right now.
Mr. Mayor, who's on the council, I did ask back in twenty twenty three, I asked Lisa Wacoss, who's the, uh, park director over at the city of Anoka. Um, just what it would cost to do one court from start to finish, and she said between twenty and twenty five thousand, so that's what it costs. In twenty twenty. No, sorry, twenty twenty one. So it would be more expensive, probably thirty, but it not, certainly not a hundred and fifty.
As I recall on our final la, my last budget meeting a while ago, we had looked at pickleball and it was fifty thousand dollars just to investigate everything. If we were to go with random courts, so that's where I'm, I would rather get the monies straight up prior to find out that rather than guessing.
Or she, they put in, the city put in little pickleball courts, and so I trust that she knew what. She said twenty and twenty five thousand.
I think that number came from prior week and they were putting it. Eat on it at the time.
That would make sense.
And, uh, a lot more sophisticated. Setup than we'd be talking about here. State of the yard's down in Tin Rapids right now. Other than a lot of health clubs are taking out their basketball courts and putting the decorate ash.
Mm hmm.
No, but the outdoor state of the yard is probably going to shrink that this. If you take a look at Ramsey, Ramsey's like, converted some of the tennis courts, which are. Much tighter because of the fencing and stuff, but. They're, they're using lineups to, it rolls. But again, at this point, um. The, when the numbers come in, well, the council, which has a chance to look at it and say, do we think that? At this much of an added to the basketball court, do this make sense? That would be this year's, it's, it's already budgeted in this year's.
That's right, that's right, so.
It would be under the budget in a month.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, under the council, well, we're focused on the, it's the twenty twenty five and four order. Regarding, we got park improvements, and, and if you don't want to identify anything. Regarding, we got apartment improvements. And, and if you don't want to identify anything now, we can still just leave the thirty thousand dollars out there. Or you can put in more. It's solely up to you. How much you want to budget for. And this, this is just a plan. It's not a budget, so we're still have to go through the budget process in August, that, but this is just a plan, so. It just kind of lets you see what you have available in five years. Or what you're thinking of doing in the next five years.
Mr. Mayor.
What's the position of the structure over there? Is thirty thousand going forward going to cover the structure over there or upgrades?
Point of parts?
Yeah. Or do they need it?
Um, because such as saying that two and like dozens of weeks. Yeah. And, and the, the next question I was gonna ask, Laurie, if I didn't use, if we didn't get it all done with the fifty thousand dollars at Twin Lakes this year. Can we move, at what point can we move some of that in the twenty twenty-five?
Um, the council, we could go to council and ask them to move it forward to the next budget if, if it's a two.
So the fifty thousand for twenty twenty-four is slightly improved in difference?
Maintenance, painting of the building, and potentially we need to put a new roof on after it's changed or in that shape of a, a matter of.
Right, yeah.
How much is a new one?
I don't have any estimates out. We put kind of a placeholder in there and say, we took kind of an indicated guess on it. I, I don't know if fifty thousand will be heavy or light to be on this, but I know we have to start doing somewhere down there. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
The buildings we have in the park down there, there is a, got that park from the county. That was gonna be a county park and they decided it wasn't big enough, so they they paid us a hundred thousand dollars to take it off their hands. And a thousand dollars a year for ten years. And, and the equipment that's in there is, a lot of the pavilions are from other county parks. And they disassembled and reassembled them here. Unfortunately, when they reassembled them, they didn't align the original screw holes in the ceiling with the ceiling panels with the new screws. So they screwed down to the structure, but there's literally holes in the bottom of the roofs. And heavy rain drips all over. So right now, we don't have plans to do that. We have the concession stand. Right now, we use a contractor stored for all that we have down there. And bathrooms. I don't think anybody's rented out the concession stand in any years.
I don't think it's usable.
And we quit doing that because people assumed there was food or money in there and kept renting them. But we don't have teams using that facility like they used to, so nobody runs sections. But the outside, the, the painted structure, it's feeling pretty bad. And I don't know if we want to go you know, fiber shingles again, or metal roof, and investigate anything like that as far as.
Well, there hasn't been nothing discussed.
Yeah, so this is a placeholder for yet to be determined price. All right? All right, next one, uh, working balance, we have thirty thousand dollars regarding twenty twenty-five. And our most expenditures on that page handle for twenty twenty-five. Let me go to, uh, road improvements.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so we're leaving the old storage in there for, um, twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna, maybe put in the, uh, fifth bay either in one week, twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-seven.
Yes, they're twenty-five, twenty-six.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Would be my opinion? Numbers don't come in, we it's truck. Maybe here this year.
Maybe.
Council, okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, then we get to the roads. And, and my suggestion is, since we believe, we just had a meeting, a work session that, uh, has been scheduled for two weeks from tomorrow, more engineering. And they're talking about a road study. Um, my question is, do we want to go with this plan? Which could be tremendously impacted by the road study that may be made for two weeks? Yeah, hold off on this and, and see. If the council agrees to pay for road study, how long would it take them to do that?
Uh, they said once they got approval, they said they would, if I think we talked about the end of sports. He didn't think it would take too long to be able to put it together. He was talking beats and so, so.
If we approve contractors more to do a new road study, that could change all of these numbers. Do we want to wait?
Between staying, huh? To change the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, which, which are priorities? And what the potential costs may be? So rather than go through a lot of this, we may redo them, we might have to stay with the M S U's vital site. Councilor.
I would agree that we shouldn't spend any time on it until we have that presentation.
Mr. Mayor, representative of the council, this was coming back to you next, uh, at the next hoops that are contemplating in a week, uh, for approval. So although you know, possibly the road part will change, I still recommend adopting it because they'll still have time in twenty twenty-four here to, to actually do a, a corrected budget for the next year. And then of course, going, moving forward, we can adjust the road plan out. But, but in order to adopt it, we either have to adopt it in May or June at the very latest, because then we start our budget process. And so I need, I need to have some dollars and, and we can wait till June, um, to adopt this, but but then you have to relook at it again before I bring it forward to you to adopt.
So we wait till June?
Counsel?
It feels like we're going to anywhere is we get new data back, we're gonna redo all this and the machines are gonna have to redo all of the estimates based on multiple, we're gonna potentially fix, modify, upgrade, repay. And I agree, the priority is if they come back and say, we think that road will make it ten years, if this one won't make it two, then might change that.
Yeah.
All right. So, so we're not, we're gonna, um, come back and revisit the whole C I P, or just the road portion. Um, and we'll plan on adopting it in June.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Road improvement fund. How, how, um, sure are you, Laurie, if the bond issued cost of only fifty thousand?
I'm not.
Right now, it's such an uncertainty.
Yeah, so last bond was forty-four eight, it was, how much, our last amount was nineteen, it was two billion six. But one million nine was here in, uh, twenty twenty-one. And then it was, the cost to the road was forty-five thousand. So I've got it up to fifty thousand. It's basically twelve percent of the twenty. I'm sorry, I increased the foundation up by twelve percent. From the previous bond issue.
And that was, the interest on that bond was eight zero eight?
It was really small, yes. Yeah, and, and this, the, the bond issue cost is really for, um, standing fours and Moody's and whoever else is looking at it. It's for Ellers, it's for the legal team. For those people that are actually issuing a debt, I don't know what the interest rate is gonna be. I've done some projections myself. Um, thinking that you'll get, uh, four, four and a half percent, I believe is what I was looking at and that up to that, because it affects your levy. Um, the back of the name here. Twenty twenty. Morning, person. I'm guessing. And I don't know, would you ask? I don't know. I'm not.
It depends on what minute you turn your news feed on.
Right. But, yeah, that's my objective, it's gotta be someone up there. So, and, and that itself will affect the levy. And the levy and the assessments.
So on, on this, um, if we're issuing a new bond, do they have an engineering or legal cost?
That, I hold that into the, the cost here. You can see if you look, I've increased it by fifteen percent because that's what I believe is the engineering cost. An additional fifteen percent. I also increased Shane's, uh, estimate by three percent to get these costs down here. So that's what all of this adds up to is. And it, it should include the engineering costs for twenty twenty-five. This is a estimate with more than.
That's Miranda.
So when you have these numbers on the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, we'll improve the project, that, so like for twenty-six, you got eighty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. That includes Shane and every, that's the whole kit and ball.
Yes, alright. Projected, projected, yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to have. And like you said, if you're having a road project or road analysis, then it's all, everything's changed.
But, sure, uh, so Laurie, but if we're using any of that money out of this twenty twenty-four? This year shouldn't affect anything going on over around the twenty twenty-five?
No.
You're not counting on any of that?
No.
Okay.
You can see here, you're, you're actually in the, in the hole, four thousand bucks.
Yeah, gotcha. I'm gonna make sure I was tracking that.
Well, when, when we issue, when we go to do the road projects this year, make sure that we, uh, Shane usually does a resolution saying that you can get reimbursed. And I know I've asked him to make sure he includes that when he does the road build project so that we can reimburse before your, your costs that you've incurred. Because that's, this bond issue includes this seven hundred and fifty-two and this one fifty. Not the one fifty.
But if we're using some of that seven fifty-two down there, there's like potentially, if I've been using some of that one fifty, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to mess up the numbers for twenty twenty-five.
So this seven fifty-two was from Waco or is it Waco?
Yeah, Roger.
Yeah, Roger.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that, that's what that's for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I'm using any of that one fifty, it's still good.
The one fifty is for patching, is what I.
Making stuff, different things we got.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah, so, so as, as long as, anything we don't spend here is gonna show up.
On the top.
On the top here. So if we spend all but four thousand dollars, we start out with zero.
Right.
As long as we don't spend more than this or that.
Right, and if you do, then, you know, we just, um.
Start out in a bigger hole.
With a bigger hole.
So Laurie, now the working balance, twelve thirty-one twenty-nine.
Working balance, right.
So at the bottom of that, it says
Oh.
Working balance, twelve thirty-one twenty-nine.
Yeah.
What does that line equate to here?
It's basically your working balance is your cash less your liabilities. And, and so, um, it's basically cash. And then that's, that's your beginning balance for twenty thirty. If we look here, it's the, the one million, one twenty-seven.
So would that equate to?
That's after, if you go ahead and we issue debt here, you know, so if everything, everything would have to happen that's shown, shown here. We have to get special assessments prepaid, we have to get interest earnings, we have to have transfers from the general fund. You know, so all of these things that I have on the spreadsheet would have to refer in order to end up with that balance at the end of twenty twenty-nine.
So that's the, it's the three point three five one less the one point one three six is the one point one four seven.
Uh, yes. Yeah. It's the net, it's the net, you have to include the beginning balance.
Yeah.
Which is a little long, but it's awesome. Yeah. Okay.
You also know?
That's a, that's a big one, so that, that's the I'm gonna, I guess, one for the session, but for a lot. And, uh, yes, let's definitely move on, cause yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, twenty twenty-nine, in today's dollars, three and a quarter million. Almost what we need, twenty twenty-nine.
Right, well, and then, and I did do increases in the sensors, so. That's just how much you'll need to fund if you want to do the projects. Mayor, members of the council, uh, we didn't have any equipment for twenty-five or twenty-six. The only equipment we had is a chip here, uh, for the fire. And that's just a thing to, uh, here. My first item is in twenty twenty-seven.
Do you know how last seven computers you ever placed?
Well, I haven't spent it for twenty twenty-eight, and the last time that, it was twenty twenty-one. That we did the network computers. That's what, all I have is, is the network computers in here.
And that's a personal computer?
I don't know what the network, it's.
What's another computer?
I don't know. It's the, the whole system, however, it runs, banning whatever, banning, I'm sorry. It's probably its own statement. I don't know.
It's, it's the server, the computer that's in that closet, that they kind of want to configure everything.
It's, it was twelve thousand dollars last time and so thirteen thousand five hundred is what I have in here. Now, I don't know if that's, if, if change software, maybe you don't need that, maybe you go with the cloud, I don't. You know, but that's a discussion we'll have that up in the future. We do have forty thousand dollars for finance software in future. I don't, that'll be in the, you know, I don't.
What I was, what I was looking at, it's not.
I, I was gonna say, that's not.
It's not even close.
I was saying, that ain't close, is it?
No, I did do a lot of research on it, but when I was talking to some other different clerks, it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
But when we were talking with the auditors, he did suggest
Some of them.
if we don't upgrade our software to at least get a cap.
Capital.
Improvement.
Yeah.
Out of, from somewhere.
Yeah, for fixed assets. So you can do, right now, we, we, um, track our fixed assets on the spreadsheet. We do the disposals, the the purchases, the depreciation, everything on the spreadsheet, because Benny doesn't have, uh, software application for depreciation and assets, fixed asset. So, and maybe they do, we, we just won't have that much, oh, I know. We could check into that to see if they have that fixed asset module.
So recently, Laurie, I've been having conversations about what could things possibly look like if we changed IT providers? I think you guys remember we talked about this a while ago. And in those conversations, when uh and I have another meeting scheduled on Thursday. Some of that equipment that's in the server room is owned by our our existing contractor that we use. So there may be some equipment that we would have to purchase or certainly upgrade if we were to someone else, because we don't own the equipment anymore. What would be the most optimal place to be able to make sure we have funds for that? That's a big figure. So I have no idea what that dollar amount is. I've just started having conversations, but we should at least have that on our radar that potentially there could be some new equipment that needs to be purchased if we were going to transition on to a different provider. I wish I had numbers for you, but this is pretty fresh. I have another another meeting on Thursday, but I don't have any idea of what kind of numbers, if anything, we should be considering for that. So do we want to put anything in there? Just to have some seed money or or last, or again, it will be, well, it could be telling what this is doing, so give you some time.
Yeah.
And real numbers to it. Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure you're, yeah, okay, I can, you can do that.
Hundred voice, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Ray.
Councilor Ray.
Um, there's also been talk about um outsourcing some of our finance um work. Laurie is like a little player. So what um, you know, if if our existing IT people have control over some of our equipment, um and we don't have the Banning capital improvement module. Would there be the possibility of a outside resource who we would hire to do other financial apps like the Banning piece or or anything that would be of assistance to us?
Good. So um we are in conversations with a company called Hapdill. They have provided us an estimate that they want to do e- everything for us, right? If they wanted to do payroll, capital plan to helping us with the investments, to quarterly updates that would come to the council to to monthly updates and whatnot. They really have a a wide range, right? I asked them to give me the full vote if we did the full vote. That was just short of ninety thousand dollars. I don't believe right now, as we're sitting here, that we may necessarily need the full amount. There's some pieces that we think are important that we could look at, but I could certainly, once we get that finalized, we can certainly bring that to the council and have further discussion of what you all think is important. But just know that if they were to do all that for us, um, we're talking about ninety thousand dollars a year to do it. But and that doesn't speak to us not still having to have our own. Interested in that. But that doesn't speak to the software and the things that we'll still need. And it's just, you know, they take our information processes. It's still, we still need the venue. We still need the interface they would be working with us on. And obviously, all the second adders on a day-to-day basis. You're incorrect, sir, too. So we don't know very. We'll say this.
Anything else, though?
No. That's the turnout here. You know, where we that that were fracturing one seventy-five hundred dollars a year and there. I'm not sure about the cost this might be, so it just will accumulate there and um they can, that's kind of anything like this.
They should have. Right now, they know what you put in this. It's iron.
Well, last year they did spend um seventeen thousand here on turnout gear. The whole was eighteen. So they've done some big spending.
Typically short of being damaged in fire.
Yeah. So.
I was just telling two rabbits that if protection constantly in their new sixty million dollar fire station. And he said that they have approximately one fire column and many hundreds of medicals. But the trucks only typically go out to a fire and on average, once a month. And I know that Chief Schmidt here said, you know, you might do two fires a year and two hundred medicals a year.
When, when you've got one.
So it's it's uh that's where most of the damage comes to be, obviously, to turnout years, back for fires. And the those two extensions they had, that was the building stuff that was aging out in ten years, it's typical.
Right, I guess they're probably going to age out before we do.
More or more.
Right. And actually, what some of the stuff they have done at that new fire station, the the new washers um for their turnout gear, no agitators, and I think they they are much more gentle on turnout gear because that is expense. And then their their air packs. They have, looks like a big dishwasher. They put two sets of air packs in there. And and so instead of having to replace it, stuff, they can clean it off, reuse it. So there are some some innovations that are coming in the fire service that may save us money down until just a capital, like, rather than over the years of the savings. Sure. And by the way, they had Pickle Ball to try to find us to play on their kick calls. Yes, sir.
Did we kind of some sort of agreement or understanding with the forty thousand dollars that we have in there for financial software? I think I heard the conversation say we don't think that's nearly enough. Natalie, do we know what we think would be enough with any of the research we've done so far? I'm just nervous.
I'd say, well, do the research because again, that's a twenty twenty-eight.
Right, right.
I'd say let's let's figure out what the number really is then. Because again, if we don't know, just guess.
Right. So question, if we're valuing computers and software, are we really using a server as a server or is it just more of a storage device? If we're using it just as a storage device, we can get by way less than thirty thousand five hundred dollars. So I'm just giving you that information if that's something that we're looking at. Back in the day, yeah, you had to get a server to do all this stuff, but if we're not using it as a server anymore and you just need a network storage device, it's called a network area server or a Nance, which is just a big giant hardware that everybody else computers can access if they need files. And that's way cheaper to administer than the server.
Okay. You're educated. I did not know that, so thank you.
I'm gonna guess. Does it pay more to sort?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine. Oh, do you know that?
Right, yeah, but if it's just that, if it's just that works installed, that's completely different than it's it's actually doing things. If you're just running the program on your on your workstation, then it's just a place to store.
So what if it's on the other?
It's it's technically a Nance network area server or storage.
Okay.
Extend me grace, roll along. And this is just more of an update. It made me think about when we're talking about the steering truck, just so you all are aware. I was told last week and confirmed this morning that we have a very, very good chance of seeing my new dump truck in tonight. So it may, it's actually in Roseville.
That, that, that whole package?
The whole package. It's in Roseville, should be going to the outfitter here shortly, Tollmaster. And once Tollmaster has everything put on that we want, the next stop is our yard. So to kind of are penciling in maybe in that July timeframe, hopefully for sure.
You can all drive down into the big parade.
Yeah, there you go. Just so to give you an update, we will get it, it sounds like, very well before.
Is that the old one?
Sir.
Well, we don't have the old one.
No, that's it for you guys in the firm, and when our recommendation is probably going to be that we don't want to improve.
Or what?
That we would hold on to it at this point.
As a backup.
Yep, as a backup. And I should have my third, yep, I should have my third driver CDL certified uh hopefully by then, it's one of the work on it. And that would give us the ability to have three trucks with three drivers that are likely to deal with that. We looked at what was it? Called a trade-in value or what we had to give for it? To be honest, it's pretty minimal. The upside of keeping a nerd truck or something was to go down or do uh the work for that is probably worth the upset and what we get in. Our recommendation that we, at this point, um, that we keep all three with the option at some point to do something, but if you want to, maybe not initially. Thank you for letting me ask you, yeah, that, for you guys. Hang on, yeah, it's still a lot of that we're asking you. Anything else, counsel? Laurie?
No.
That happened.
Friend, friend. Still talking truck? Well, neither, do we need to order the trucks to the manager?
The next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the turnaround is much quicker. People are already in trucks, beginning within the same calendar year. So the the spy chain that we ran into with this other one.
Seems to have been evaded for now.
Did we put it in there, Laurie?
When all the, that the fire department meeting, one of the guys was staying in another department. They were, as long as you order the spec truck. Get it going to be same, so I don't know, you know, that's.
Roseville was turning down pretty quick. We chose to go with something else. And we were told that we got the last chest. Never got an ID number. And whatever we were told, it was somebody else. Three years running. But we're getting a three percent cash back each year. They they're gonna be paying us, they say.
So when are we getting back together to discuss these and when are the numbers needed to do? Are you live? I'll start June meetings, start doing regular council meetings.
Will that be enough time for your street guy? He said it's gonna be no longer. Well, the street.
I'm meeting with him until the twenty-first if council approves.
Of May? So now we're talking July, because I don't be granted by that. And you're, you're not.
I'm bringing it to council for approval on the twenty-first, that's as soon as.
Yeah. And they're, they're gonna take at least two to three weeks.
I would guess.
So now you're talking July. We just do the budget in March. So looking at July for the council meeting.
And the other thing that'll be coming in front of you, counsel, on the twenty-first is also the MS four. And we have not, or have we ever, to my knowledge, for looking at anything, put any money aside for that? Maybe something else we're gonna.
That's a Nance.
Uh, that's gonna be our, our checking out our ponds and all the problems and making sure that our compliance, we just went through an audit last year with that. And making sure we're up to save all guidelines of all the water, what was in water.
Yeah.
Making sure that we aren't dumping things into the storm sewers and all that kind of stuff. And it's uh it's a program that's in place that they're enhancing more and more, getting more and more stringent about. And if we are gonna adopt that program, that's an asset of money for someone going forward to administer.
Yeah.
And the scarier part for me is if we finally condemn on or something in there, which means fifty per, or any of our bonds are more than fifty percent sludge and all that kind of stuff in it, that considers it condemned and that then has to be estimated out of the policy. Don't know what these numbers are, but they're not cheap. And we have nothing set aside for you. So more to come on the twenty-first, a lot more representation. But that may be something we also want to talk about if if the council approves that. Where does that get into both state banks? Because it's something brand new that we haven't done.
So private as well?
Excuse me?
So private ponds as well?
It'd be a great question to ask. On the twenty-first, I don't know if it's. But it goes into our salt storage and all of this stuff. Any of that kind of stuff, because of the issue.
It is a difficult.
Same, just for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. It's almost two places to get rid of that. And then, or.
So we kind of tip them a hand, a little of things that are coming, but things that definitely are gonna affect that, or could affect this kind of council.
So sorry, budgeting, Laurie, baby, we're just mainly looking for, in essence, for for time of twenty twenty-five budget, it's mainly looking for a placeholder. We're not exactly looking at what projects we're going to do.
That's why, this is just.
So necessarily holding up um budget, if if that was the concern, in my opinion.
Um, no, we can adopt this in in July. It's uh, you know, it's part of the budget process is to have a, an improvement plan because then what um the staff should do is take everything that's in here for twenty twenty-five and then put it in there.
But if we have a placeholder of whatever, one point eight, and that's all we're gonna be able to do next year, then if it came down to that, then we can keep going forward.
Oh, yeah. And you can always issue more than that.
Can I just ask the council, I just want to be clear, do I have marching orders? I have four. Takeaways for myself here, which I'm sure Natalie's captured in the notes, too. And if I miss street signs and stop signs, all that kind of stuff, I need to check in and out as far as what our inventory may be and budgets, right? Just be at the fire department on the west end, moving the generator or possibly putting the generator inside and um and a tower for the center, looking into that, coming back with estimates, pricing, logistics on all that. Uh I'm sorry, this is me. I just have to contact Shane on some of that. And then IT equipment for server, et cetera, back to the council. One dollar, well, some, an estimate on what will cost if we have to buy it. Is there anything else? First of all, new. You guys give me direction to go ahead and knock those things off. Is there anything else on this? Anything on your notes, Natalie? I just want to make sure. And I gotta make your list of my marching orders.
Not for next year, this year, just physical cost of your physical size, basketball court.
Uh, I have that in their makings. I'll have that coming over a few, because that's part of it is part of twenty-four. I'll just give you a quick, so on top of the council meeting that's coming up on the fourteenth, I have the two parking lots and striping and concrete work that needs to go with it. And then my follow-up to that is I'm also taking a look at a hundred ninety-eight here in front of the recycling center, in front of the fire station down through the park. If we were gonna do something with it, I know that the asphalt in front of the recycling center is a pretty tough shape over there, so I've got. If we were gonna do something with it, I know that the asphalt in front of the recycling center is in pretty tough shape, I would say, so I've got estimates, uh, from contractors, I think we did that. The basketball court and the pickleball court is also part of that. Taking a look at some of the stuff here, and then I've also just asked, um, the contractors, let me get into this, uh, what if we did something down at Twin Lakes? Like an overlay or something like that, it doesn't look like it's gonna need an inch and a half overlay, but let's say we did a chip seal or something. Try to seal, sealed up the road and then put some new striping on, how's that on the? Saturday, I hope you're there, and, um. The market, there's, there's not much left, and of course, you know, like, because the marketing, the striping and all that kind of stuff, so. I'm trying to just take a look at some of these things, and then I'll, I'm bringing all these numbers back to you, and to the mayor's point. That basketball court versus pickleball court is all a part of that, so I will be able to show you both ways, if we just did it court the way it is, or if we didn't come to make the pickleball, you'll see what the difference is. Won't be in May, just don't, don't be expecting it, the only thing coming in May at the council meeting is. Parking lot, parking lot, striping, and concrete work, which is the sidewalk and different things, uh, at, at city offices, that's what's coming in. So I'll kind of do the pieces for you guys.
I'd like, I'd like to just say that it might be prudent of all of us to, if we're gonna go with this pickleball, that we look further. Into what it would cost actually to do it with everything, because. It's not gonna just remain that way, and then we're looking at doing something that. We're putting money forward that might cost more money later, and I would like to look at the outcome of that.
So. Mr. Mayor. Sure, so initially, and I can't remember when I. Looked at it early on when I came up with it. I did meet a contractor up there that specializes in doing that. Pickleballs, took a look at that area, took a look at the hiking range, just kind of gave you some ideas, but, um, we didn't move forward with that because. That might have been where you were, this happened around the fifty thousand dollars, so. I don't believe I have approval to. Move forward and spend that kind of money on specking it out, so what?
I'm not saying that, I mean.
You just want me to call others and see what maybe they spent on it, is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, and I'm willing to do that too, if council is okay.
I think you just need, what, what are you asking to be specked out, because like I say, and everything from. Convert a tennis court in Ramsey to a state of the art, so in congruence, I mean.
Well, I just think what we do sometimes is, um, it's kind of like the nickel and diming. If, if you look at it a small way, is that we start with something because we think it's gonna save us money, and it ends up. Costing us money because we've already put the money forward to do one, like a little bit of thing, and because we've already put that money forward, then it's kind of like, oh. We've already put this much money forward, so what I'm saying is, I don't want to get caught in that because. We're responsible to other people, and when that fifty thousand dollar came up, I was like, that's crazy, and. I hear more and more and more people saying, say, you know, we need to. We need to look at our budget, and so when we're looking at our budget, I think it's great, but we have all these meetings that we look at the piecemeal, and then it comes to the whole thing. So I'm just looking at. Piecemealing is, is great, and I know we have to get down to looking at that. But it's never gonna stay that way, because people are gonna complain that their balls are going all over. I've played pickleball, I know what it's like to play on the courts, and so I'm just saying. I, because it's also, you brought up, Mr. Mayor, um, the Ramsey courts are always filled, and people are not getting in there, or are we then gonna only allow residents of Malvin to be in there? I mean, there's so many things. That go along with this, that I think we just need to kind of think about it before we go ahead and spend more money.
So what is the ask of me tonight, how far do you want me to go tonight?
I wanna know. I wanna know how much a pickleball court is to put in, basically, or how much it costs cities around us like Oak Grove, Ramsey, um, Elk River. To put in a pickleball court.
We'll talk to others on what they have spent on, but don't spend any money at this point.
And I'm willing to do that myself, I can make those phone calls, so it's not, doesn't make staff do math.
And is that retrofitting in something existing, or is that?
Yeah. Well, it could be both, Mr. Mayor.
And Laurie.
To consummate the platte, but I think what we need to do is say. We wanna look at pickleball, do we wanna go? The cheap, get it in there, let them play it, the middle of the road with some. Amenities to a pickleball court, to a old fledge. Really expensive. I'm not into really the expensive one, um. We gotta be somewhere between the, let's do it in an area that we already have something up to a middle of the road and one. But what do we want? What are we willing to compromise, take away from what we have? What area are we looking at? Is the area that we're looking at or considering the best place? Is there a location that even within like Memorial Park? That is a better fit for it based on the level of the ground, I mean, what do we have to do to be able to do it? Um, I think we need to have that conversation, um. Before we can look at. Going out and getting pricing, um. You can get some ballparks, but you don't know what was there before, what, what, um. What did they have to do to get it there, you know, what, I mean, I remember one time we had to talk about the grading of the park over there, so you're doing a, a wall or fencing of some sort. Because it wasn't level, or what does that cost? Um, you're gonna have to have. Unless we do a shanny says piecemeal, you're gonna have to have an architect come out and draw you plans for it. Um, that is not an inexpensive thing to have done.
So at one point, we talked ad hoc committee, pickleballers and engineers, you know. Making recommendations. The idea here was. We're replacing the basketball court, trying to get something level over there for basketball. Didn't make sense to slightly enlarge it. You know, right now, people bring their own nets. With pickleball, you can bring your own nets and you tape off the court.
Right.
And we're just saying, there's a place in Malvin, you could do that if you want. My nephew brings his own faith, his own net. And they just find a parking lot, they set up. Um, so the, the idea was to see the money and say, for an extra five grand. We could have this larger thing there, and then we can do the research. My concern is, is. We, we don't have any specs, it kind of what it comes down to. These capital meetings, we didn't have them for the longest time, until Laurie. Started bringing up a few years back during the budget meeting, and then we throw numbers. That's where the fifty thousand pickleball comes in, fifty thousand against the law, who pickleball? Nobody knew what it was, nobody knew what the specs were, how level, how. You know, we, we have the billions, people can sit in the shade while they're waiting to, to play, um. That takes some research. The, the, the request here was, we're gonna have to pay to that basketball court anyway. It's an extra ten feet. It makes it legitimate for two courts there. If we wanted to buy a net, rent it out, lend it, lend it out, well, people want to bring it out, because that's a lot of people who have their own nets. You just find a parking lot and you set up. So do we want to dip our toe into it for minimal cost while we're doing research on? Where is this, oh, then you can say, okay, how much is the, the courts being used in that neighborhood cities? And, and here's the Taj Mahal to the. Trailer court. You know, which one, somewhere in between, what do you want to do? But since we're gonna be paving that court this summer. It just seemed to make sense to at least ask the question, does it? The who was to make it big enough that somebody could do something while we're trying to figure out what to do long term? Because we keep coming up with this on budget time, and then we have these questions of, how much is that really gonna cost? Since we don't have those answers yet, the question was. Does an extra ten feet? Get us anything? It's not gonna hurt the basketball. And, and it's not used for pickleball, it's just an extra ten feet of black pepsi.
At, at forty eight hundred dollars.
What I'm saying is that it would be special for. For those people that do play pickleball, that fight, people go on, same thing we did when we, this court.
When is that being done? When is, when we, we lose?
I don't know, I've proved it.
Well, you've got a plan for the summer, though, you're saying.
The intention was to put that, not going back this summer. I. You know, Scott's.
So we have a little bit more time.
But you certainly don't have to decide at night, no, no. I, that's gonna be part of my presentation to you, once we get to the two part ones I talked about, is this is. The other things, all the way from Twin Lakes to one hundred ninety eighth to. Doing something in front of the recycling center, that's all gonna be separated out, I got two bids on everything, some three bids, and that'll come back to council for proof. And nothing's, nothing's standing there at the right moment. Can I answer your question? Anything else?